This is the east elevation.
We keep going, Zach?
It did, we're back up.
That's the side that's gonna be facing the river. And this is the south side, this will be the side that's facing. Pine Street, thank you.
So with the colors, did you mention the colors yet?
I didn't mention the colors.
So the, the Yamen's worked with members of the Landmark Society to choose the colors so that they were...
In keeping with the historical...
Historically correct and pleasing. I think they came out great, I love, I love those colors.
The, the other big project was the Keeter Opera House that was approved for to go forward.
So it does look like they've got, they do have more than one apartment on that third floor, right? Is it three?
Um...
Two little ones and then giant ones?
Three and three.
So there's one giant one and two little ones upstairs at third floor, yeah?
They have to maintain the stage, so I guess that's gonna be one big bedroom.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's the, I believe that's the front beside, and they're gonna put the balcony back in place and get the windows fixed, so...
These are both great projects for the Yamen's.
And then, talking with Stephanie Fox and Jim in regards to the freight station. For our, those that understood, the cobblestone parking lot that's there and the freight station is remaining to help maintain the storeport nature. So I know that'll make, that'll retain the character of that building. So, I'd like to commend the CBA, the planning board, and Craig for really going through the detail work to make these projects, make sure that they're successful.
Any other discussion on codes?
Thank you, Pat.
Great, thank you for your job doing all, thanks for stealing those plans from the Yamen's.
Yeah, I, I do have to give them back. I make a motion that we accept the codes report as written.
One second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, streets and parks. Do you want us to read through it, Mike, or you wanna?
No, you guys do what you want to.
Mike, I just had a quick, who determines which of the trees come down?
I'm going around right now, of course I've got a lot of residents that ask for trees to come down, trees to be trimmed. Trees they don't want cut down, so right now it's, you know, that situation. We, we did that pretty much, you know, this spring, through the winter and this spring.
I got a question for ya, the county, I do believe, just voted to make Amnesty Day, not Amnesty Day, but it's all the time and it's a credit. How's that gonna work for village residents? How are we gonna do that?
If they voted not to have it, right?
No, they voted to have it.
Well, what they're doing is it's, you can, the municipality can take stuff up any time.
Right, I think we have a credit of like a thousand and eighty dollars.
Sixteen hundred dollars, I think, and it comes out to thirty tons.
Thirty tons.
Sixty, seventy, seventy a ton, right?
So how are we gonna handle it as the village? You got an idea?
I hadn't really thought about it anymore, I mean, the county's not gonna do it anymore, but they're letting us continue to do it with a credit.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, we can do another one if we've got a credit up there.
Maybe do one in the fall?
Yeah, which would probably be a good idea, so we don't get so much in the spring.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's starting to pile up again over in my yard, anyway, 'cause obviously we pick up the stuff that gets left out, so...
Have we been cracking down on that yet? You still been too much of a good cop?
Yeah, 'cause it seems that, I always get hollered at no matter what I say, so... So we just, you know, it, it's just worth it to pick it up and not go through some of the aggravation, so...
As long as you, you're okay and there's not, if there's a particular place that's abusing it, though, that's not okay.
Now, now I did stop at one on grocery and told her that I thought they were abusing it just a little bit too much, but here again, I gotta be careful, 'cause everybody takes what you say the wrong way.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're waiving the policy for them, they oughta be happy.
I know. But I don't want anymore of the, this being said that I'm threatening them or anything like that, but it, it seems that no matter how I approach it, it gets interpreted the wrong way, so... I think at this point, we're not overloaded with it, there's something out there, you know, quite often right now, but let's just continue to pick it up.
I think the answer, then, is when you've got somewhere that needs to be talked to, come to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have either, we'll have some, I, I think just a letter from the office even, you know? And that way it's, it's not like it's one person's vendetta against another person, it's...
Well, I, I've found if I take somebody else with me too.
Right.
That's standing over my, my shoulder, you know, in the background listening, that it's not quite as...
I'd be more than happy to go with you.
I usually take, you know, Nick will usually go with me, I'll take Billy with me, so that's what we've gotten down to, you know?
Right.
Instead of me seeing it and stopping and saying something and it getting misinterpreted.
Okay, alright. Oh, you can go, yeah, thanks, thank you, great.
You know, the other thing I wanted to mention, if, if you notice, we did the North Pole and North Portland Street, and I'm sure you'll see the build. Paving drum has gone up.
Yes, it has, I just saw it.
Why is that? Cost of materials?
So, we've, I think I figured this day we've got seventeen thousand left to do just the fire station.
And then we're done for the year?
We're cutting it close. And it doesn't look like you're gonna get, as of right now, the state says the amount we're getting is the same as it was last year, but it doesn't look like you're gonna get it next year, so we wanna be thinking about that too.
Alright, that's actually something we'll be talking about budget time, I guess. At least the county only cut us seventy thousand dollars a year, sales tax.
Seems like we might get hit kinda hard next year with some of this stuff.
Alrighty.
I did wanna just, because Mike put it in there, I thank you to the town of Homer, town of Cortlandville, town of Scott, town of Virgil, town of Solon, town of Truckston, and town of Preble. You know, we talked about shared services and working together, all those towns came together to help us with our, our paving, which allowed us to do it. How quickly did you do that, Mike?
We did that, Portland Street, we did, we did it one day.
Yeah, that's great.
So because of all those working together, we were able to do it quickly, and, you know, we talked about shared services, well, we're doing it, so...
And you kept, you, did you keep track, did you keep track of what we get as well as what we give, or just you keep track of both?
Both, both.
Thank you, that's excellent, I appreciate that.
We, we have been to the town of Kyler already and helped today with the sweeper, I mean, this is what happens.
Yeah.
Each and all of us, you know, we're all trying to help each other, so...
I know. Alright, the next report here, oh, I mean, it's report, next report.
Just a quick mention, Nick was great help on the line event system, so...
Was he?
Well, I can tell you too, I mean, he did the tailpipes and, you know, he was there pretty much keeping up on what was going on, I mean, neither of us could be there, so...
That's excellent. Thank you, Nick. He's watching, that's why I say that that way, I know he's watching the video.
Yeah, he's watching, I'm sure.
I watch him. Uh, did, uh, did, oh, well, I guess we'll get to it in the fire report.
I make a motion to accept the DPW report as written.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, unanimous.
I hear you talking about it, fire.
That's right, we'll wait on Farmer's Market until Kristen comes after the Farmer's Market. Uh, alright, fire report. Okay, that answers my question about when they were coming up to fix the ladder truck.
Yeah. And what we're looking at there is, we had to wait and make sure that they're bringing everything that they may possibly need.
Right.
So whatever would have to be fixed, but if there's only two that need to be fixed, that's all we're gonna fix.
Right.
And check the rest of the stuff out, but we wanted to make sure that instead of having them come up and say, "Oh, you know what, this one's bad too." Bring everything you need.
Yeah, no, that's good. Alright, let's talk about this issue with the banners, I see you got it on your report.
Yeah. There's getting to be more and more of them, and they just show up, and this last week, we had one that we put up, and then they said, "This one's gotta come down because this event is first," and we needed to get some sort of schedule or something along that line, in fact, the last one, because the ladder truck is out, we couldn't put up, so Mike got um, Stevie to follow with his tree truck to come and switch him out, but to keep going, I mean, there's more than there ever used to be, it seems like there's one for about everything going on.
So...
And is the village, or is each group getting an actual permit to put them up? Don, I see you pounding your finger.
I stand.
They're gonna approve, I don't have any think of a permit, there is no banner permitting, as such, but they do, they must seek approval, so if your banners that aren't approved are going up, which could be a conversation, but permits also would help. You could certainly check with us and see if something's been approved.
I believe that there's a New York State, 'cause it's across the state highway, that the state is either supposed to give a permit or approval, one or the other. For them to be hung up.
That's what I was wondering. I think the, the village, I think, has an annual permit, it used to get an annual permit.
Yeah, I think we have an annual thing with them, agreement with them, and then I think that we need to start charging a twenty-five dollar fee and scheduling it on a calendar.
Stevie charges fifty dollars.
To put it up.
If I have to use Steve, it's fifty dollars, so...
Raise the permit fee.
I mean, it'd be nice to go say we could do them, but... You know, our, our guys are doing it, they're volunteering their time.
Do they mind doing it?
No, they don't mind doing it, but it's just a matter of people, "Well, when are you gonna put it up, when are you gonna put it up?" Or, "That one can come down, that one can come down, you know, that event's over," and the, the one that we had, the ladder truck was broke, and we said, "We can't get it down till that's fixed." So, you know, we get into that kinda thing, and in the meantime, they bring the other one in, when we put the other one up, and they said, "Well, holiday in Homer's first, so take the other one down, put this one up," and...
So...
If there's some way we can try to schedule or do something, et cetera.
My thought is, everything goes through Dan.
Process.
We approve, the board approves them. Fifty-dollar fee, and then Dan decides when they go up and down based on the calendar.
It's in the connection with the fire department.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think Dan should be, the village office should be the point of contact, the fire department shouldn't have to deal with this.
No.
No, you could send them our way, anybody who's getting out of line, because it's gotta be, I mean...
Well, nobody's really getting out of line, it's just that there's becoming more and more of them.
Well, you say, I know, you say more and more, but there's only so many banners that have been approved even this year, so if people are just showing up to put things up, then that...
Oh, see, but I didn't know if they had to be approved by the user.
Yeah, we, we need to, we need to approve them.
We did what we did, we did for one of them, and the other ones were...
So I think they just assumed that we put them up, you know, people asked, "Okay, who put that one up?" "The only fire department did."
So they bring them up.
I'm sure that they've... Because they've got, I think there's three or four of them sitting down there now in the fire station.
Are they really?
Yes.
We need a motion?
Either been us or down or waiting.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, so Dan's gonna coordinate, fee is fifty dollars, and the going up and coming down is gonna be based on the calendar, not on people's gut, and then any, any banners that go up, we just, we have to...
Shouldn't holiday and Homer take questions, though, because it's, it's been going on so many years, then work around that one? Well, I think we need to take a look at what's...
Well, what's, is there a competition between...
What's the competition, what else is...
The other one.
Yeah, we just took down one that wasn't really due till July twenty-sixth, we put up the one for that's coming up, that you guys just talked about.
Holiday in Homer.
Holiday in Homer, but the Access to Independence, July twenty-sixth, they, boy, they hounded, they hounded me. They wanted that up right away, and I kept telling them.
They got approval.
Yeah, but they, they...
So part of the approval process is gonna be start date, end date, and that's it? And that's the way it's gonna be?
Well, then if you know what events are coming and what banners are there, you can kinda say, "Okay, yours can only be here for a week because another one's coming."
Well, I think we should set a limit to, right now, set a precedence for how long that banner needs to be up before the damage actually happens. It's usually been a week. But I've seen the holiday in Homer one up for weeks. That's never been approved as far as I know.
Time, time, time out, please, part of that timing, the timing is, if we know that the scheduling, it's easier for the fire department to take one down, put one up at the same time. So, in that case, one banner might be up for, say, four weeks, just because of the scheduling of taking one down, putting it up. That way they're not up and down, and up and down. I think how we fix this is we, we'll write up a policy on how we do it. Dan can gin something up, we'll approve it, and then we'll outline, we'll solve it then, instead of having to... I mean, we've got all, pretty much essentially what we need right now, for the policy, and then let him clean it up, and then we'll approve it, and we'll have a policy in place, but I think in the short term, everything goes through the village office and Dan, and they stop bothering the firemen.
And, you know, in these events that they know well ahead of time, when they're, when the event is, they'll jump in and get the permit, you know, and schedule their time. So it shouldn't be an issue. And that might be a good project for the intern to do.
That's, that's good.
Create that document.
We're not trying to be difficult about it, but it just needs to be...
You guys shouldn't be getting badges, no one should be getting badges.
Sorry, you just...
You can't even think about it, because we've always just, they brought them in and we've...
I appreciate it.
Done it, and it's just that...
So you're saying I can come down with a banner that says, "I'm pretty awesome," and you guys just put it up for me?
Well, no, it wouldn't be quite like that.
It would be up for one day.
There's typically, you know, it's an event, but they've called and, I don't know, "Well, how come it's not up yet?" Or, "How come it's still up?"
Yeah, so we'll just root them off, rote them through Dan, and...
That would be helpful.
Yeah. Get them under care.
We, we were all right, it was moving right along until, until we had this issue with the ladder truck, or, you know, I think we're moving along, but... It was the issue with the ladder truck, then I had to pull Steve in to put it, to change it, that's what happened here.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the fire report.
I'll make that motion, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Just one quick comment, if you haven't been down to see it, and again, I think I've said this before, but thanks from me specifically for the village taking the bite for the cost of the exhaust system. That's in, it's all being used, the guys are hooking it up, it works well, it makes a little bit of noise when it's running, but I think it's doing the job that he asked it to do. And we should, and I talked to Pat about this, there should be a credit coming for that, I don't have the exact amount yet, or the guy had offered a couple of different ways that we might be able to do that, which I'd have to let you guys decide, but we had to make some changes as they were putting the system in, because when they just look at it, it looked like it was gonna be able to do this, and we had to take some things out and change them out, so that reduced the cost a little bit. But they've gotta go through all the stuff that was sent back and then what we got, but he says there'll be a credit for what's there, so we should see some money back, and, you know, there's a couple of different ways we might be able to use that money.
Okay.
Once I have an exact number, I'll let you guys know that. Unless anybody's got any questions. We're running about two calls a day, on average.
Mostly EMS?
Uh, well, let me see here, I can tell you. The village has taken about half of them, everything that we run. And it's not quite half EMS. So it's a little less than fifty percent, there's EMS in the village. Majority of the calls in the village are EMS.
Were you guys called for assistance with the vehicle fire in eighty-one last weekend?
Uh, one that was non-existent, or...
No, there was one that was floating in Gulf Coast Plains when I drove by.
Whereabouts?
Just between Cortland and...
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Going northbound?
Yeah, right on the curve down there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep. So that scared the hell out of me when I drove by, I was like, whoa.
Yeah, that, that was ours, it was just in our district, otherwise the city would've had it, but...
Alright, police report. Chief likes us to just read it? Yeah, flies under the radar.
So did you get the bike yet, chief?
Yes, it's actually down, getting...
Detailed?
I love the detail, but I'm getting it, I don't know if it works, some maintenance done to it for the service.
I'll put a plug in while everybody's reading the bike rodeo. It's July fourteenth. Kid's age five twelve. Anything else about that, chief?
Just giving away helmets, there's an obstacle course.
Three helmets.
Three helmets, yeah. Do you have extra large?
What's that? I don't know about that size.
Chief is going to check on the surveillance cameras once a month, is that gonna be adequate, or? You're gonna wait to hear a report or see something and then check it, but just once a month and just check it?
Yeah, just check and make sure that it's...
So you don't have to go every week or anything?
Yeah, just wanna make sure, check once a month, make sure they're up to go under.
Right.
And then if we get some sort of incident, we need to look at it.
Yeah, bam, alright, great.
I'll make a motion that we accept the report as written.
Second?
I just have one last question, chief, the congregational church race on the twenty-first?
Yep.
Do they have any idea about how many people they're expecting?
No.
Will that just shut down one lane?
Yeah, they usually keep, they'll probably try to keep it over the shoulder.
Okay.
Like I said, my report, Sheriff's Department's gonna give us a hand up by the bridge.
Okay.
And just to try to keep traffic slow.
Thanks, chief.
Another thing I'd like to mention, and I'll probably, with my notes at the end there, Robert and Darlene Lever donate a shed to the police department?
Yes.
Just like to thank them, thank Mike and his crew. Town of Problem for getting it down here, and Mike's guys went through it, and...
Please, thank you to Robert and Darlene Lever for that, did the scouts come paint it yet?
Nope.
Lazy.
No, I gotta get the weather.
Oh, it's the weather?
Jeez, huh.
It's too hot?
Yeah, it's too hot, or, you know, we get these... Some of them are okay.
Oh, yeah, damn, that sounds funny. Anything else you wanna share, chief?
It's all that, sir.
Yeah?
I think we already got a second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Recreation. Mr. Zach. I know we're missing concert right now that many of us would like to be at.
Absolutely.
Do you think we're gonna be that, get out of here that quickly?
We still got thirty minutes.
Alright, we'll go. Flapping my thumbs, okay.
I'll go quick, then.
Yep.
Soccer's...
The highlights.
Soccer's going really well, a little rough start because of, you know, that crazy rain thunderstorm we had last week or the week before.
Right.
Um, I think we've had three or four cancellations already in the first three weeks, so we've gotta do some rescheduling. Ordered a bunch of new soccer balls, size three, for the little kids. That was a cost I wasn't expecting. Babe Ruth is going well, Tammy, the Mobile Arts and Craft Band, has got tons of kids.
Does she?
Uh, yeah, and I think, I don't, I don't know what the difference is, but maybe it's because they're not running the camp, the art camp at the school this year.
Oh.
So maybe there's some overflow there, but I've stopped by a couple times and the kids are loving it.
My grandkids have gone several times, they love it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I spoke to somebody who I went to school with and who's almost thirty, and she was there when she was a kid, so she's been doing it a very long time.
Could be forty-three if she was there.
She was doing it, that's awesome.
That's great.
Um, concerts obviously going on, old timers we did in the center, that was great. And then last week was Stacy Maxx and the Cats on the fourth, which was a little worried about the people showing up, and we had fifty people, I think, on a, on the Fourth of July, when the streets were empty, it was pretty decent. So that was good.
Your mission, Zach, you don't think we should do it on the Fourth of July next week?
I don't think so, I think...
It makes sense.
Yeah.
It probably won't be around for, yeah, I don't know how many, how many more years, and we'll hit that again, but...
I understand calendars are time.
Uh, everything else is good. The, the swing set, is, are we gonna talk about that?
We're gonna vote on it, but, uh, you wanna talk about it?
Well, I haven't done any research on it yet, I haven't actually done anything since I saw your email, so...
So I think, I mean, I think they had a swing picked out that, you know, I think that they were probably happy with. I, I think all we really need to figure out is what mounting hardware we need, so pretty much chains and bolts and stuff.
That, that all comes with it.
It all comes with the swing?
I researched it a little bit, like I said.
Thanks, Mike.
I did bring it with me, yeah, I mean, it looks like it goes by the specs we need to go by, and I am definitely in favor of it.
Oh, yeah, my only concern is that there was a weight limit on it, and you get some of the bigger kids horsing around down there, and they sit on it, and breaks.
That's why you have three different sized swings over there, yeah, there's a weight limit on it, and we just need to let them know it's the resident here that wanted to do this, or no. I think it's a really good idea, we just need to make sure they know that, I'm sure it's gonna get used by other, by other kids.
I think that they, actually in their email indicated that they thought that they had seen them other places or knew them other places, and they were really popular with, with any kids, so...
It, it, it does, it does seem to be a popular thing, so I am definitely in favor of it, you know, not only does it help them, but it helps save us a little bit of money, so...
Yeah, no, I think it's, I think it's fantastic.
We could probably see if we could get it at a cheaper price, you know, it appears this is the list price.
Right.
You know, if you want me to check and see if, you know, they'll sell it to us at a cheaper price, might be a good idea.
That'd be great. Yeah.
I mean, we could save the tax money, anyway, I'm sure, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, I have all the information on that, I can take the time.
Alright, I would entertain a motion on the rec report.
I'll make a motion to...
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, water billing, Kristen. Check down that water leak at the corner of Grove and Twenty-eighteen, that's good.
We got that patched today, too, if you happen to notice, I'm gonna...
Oh, did you patch it today?
Yeah, I got patched in the corner down.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to accept the water report as written, water and school.
Uh, second?
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Yeah. That's all for the reports, for now, so one of the things that we just started this meeting and we're gonna be doing from now on is posting all of the department reports, along with the agenda, on the village website, so that people can download them. You can go, even though we don't get them at home, you can get them before you come to the meeting, you can look at them on your phone later. Yeah, it's, it's good, so, uh, so that's, because the departments are getting their reports... Yeah, it's, it's good, so, uh, so that's because, uh, the departments are getting their reports in earlier, and then Dan's able to compile them from up there, so that's, that's a good new thing, so everybody can see what's going on. All right, privilege of the floor. What about you, Colonel, you got anything to say, or you can help me with something?
I got my canoes all lined up, I'm just waiting for you guys to finish the-
We're released, you can go, you can go up in there, I'll give you a push.
Just another thing, uh, to show up at Hobo's Tuesday night, I'll buy you a private dinner.
I will be there on Tuesday night, but I won't be able to eat much, that's, uh, but I'll be there.
Why is that?
Well, I had, uh, I had gastric bypass, so I can only eat like about a cup of food.
Little bit.
I'll eat a cu- I'll eat a little bit of good food.
Okay.
But yes, I will be there.
You'll get out cheap.
Yeah. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
In regards to the, uh, recreation report, I've spoken to Mike three or four weeks ago about putting in a bicycle-only air filling station, because he's probably tired of me filling up behind the fire station, and it should be on one of the buildings that's accessible to all ages of children and or adults that are on bicycles only, not someplace where people are never be able to pull cars, trucks, tractors in and put air on their bicycles for free, and I think there's probably some money from some older bicycle riders like myself for the project.
That's a great idea.
Someplace down by the wreck building probably.
Yeah, just someplace that would be for bikes only and kinda get the word out that, you know, in case air moods are down or flat tire, that there's a place to go.
I like it.
So all we need would be, uh- Yeah, like a small compressor, right? Even like a one of those pancake ones would be big enough.
Yeah, something like that.
And I know Zach wouldn't mind having a compressor in the rec office.
Actually, that would probably be better, you know, if we, we did a small compressor over there.
Yeah, they'd just pop it outside.
It's only on from six in the morning until-
Yeah.
You put on a timer, it's just not available after ten o'clock at night.
That's a very good idea, too. Uh-
Something like, see, it's Stewart's on the wall, or-
Yeah. He's got nothing going on in the middle of summer.
Nothing, no.
And then the other thing, so now everyone's talking about Airbnbs, it's obviously not in the old village code. In the village code right now, there's the ability to have a bed and breakfast if its owner occupied with up to four rooms in any of the districts, doesn't exempt R one, R two, general business, central business, and or industrial. Additionally, boarding houses are recognized by the state of New York, boarding houses have a little different compliance, a boarding house is a place where there's people, individuals unrelated, living in individual sleeping rooms without private baths, those require six rooms per bathroom, no more than, so there's a little difference between a bed and breakfast, a boarding house, and now an Airbnb. It's not gonna be resolved tonight or in the near future, but as the new code is rewritten, I think the board needs to think about how they wanna differentiate between perhaps a boutique in motel hotel in the business district versus an R two zone, versus an R one zone, versus an industrial zone, so-
It's a good work session.
Airbnb, Airbnb is set up so you can fee, I spoke to the county, they want to get their skin of the occupancy tax, which is five percent.
I'm sure they do.
And, and I would put it on the table right now, I think anybody that's running Airbnb, bed and breakfast and or boarding house for longer-term people here in the village, maybe you should think about some sort of, there's a permit required for, uh, bed and breakfast, I don't think there is one for the boarding house in what I looked at quickly tonight, but maybe some sort of occupancy tax or an annual fee or a monthly fee, because there's, according to the code now, every bed and breakfast is supposed to get an annual inspe- inspection by Craig's office, so that's my fifty cents.
Yeah, it's a good work session topic.
The county, when they did that, they, they talked about Airbnbs, and then you could actually say, hey, you gotta have, you can only have five in the village, or every five houses could have one, you can't have them like a row, you can do a lot, but you can't, what I mean, it's-
See, then you get kinda crazy, because the whole council of the Airbnb is that you, anybody can do it anytime, sort of thing, and if maybe at one point you just happen to be going out of town for a while to rent your house.
And one of the issues, and you could do that with, with your codes, but what, how would you like to have ten houses in a row, all Airbnb every night?
Uh, it's not like it turns them into frat houses.
How do you know? Somebody lives there, they just come and go.
This, this isn't-
There's something to discuss.
When we, when we do in the work session, yeah, there, another village went through this, they had some issue with it, what they thought, so I just have to remember the village name, I think I'll pick it up, and we can look at it in the village work session.
Sure.
I, I-
For my place, for sure.
From a personal standpoint, I just stayed in eight different Airbnbs, eight nights in a row in various parts of New England, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania, and I didn't see any incidents of that, either in individual buildings, one of which was an apartment house, a couple of single-family homes, and a couple of lakeside properties, they were all different, they were all distinct, and I didn't see any of that, and-
That's right.
And they were all different.
I was gonna say, I've heard nothing but things about Airbnb.
Yeah.
But there have been buildings in New York City which have been completely emptied out and turned into Airbnb hotels.
That's a whole, yeah, that's a whole different, yeah, yeah.
And then lastly, to follow up what you're talking about with Dan and the banners, anybody that's ever put one up in the past should just get notification that there's gonna be a little tighter policy, so they're not, well, we've always done it this way, you know?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody online? Just people saying hi.
Yeah, Nicola, Nick said you're welcome, but it's my job. And then, uh, combined insurance says hello.
All right, old business, non-new business, uh, approval of the adapted swing set to be installed, we've talked about it, uh, yes, sir?
Can I just, at, uh, at some point, can you move the one, or can I talk about the fire truck thing, I have another meeting at seven o'clock, and I just wanna be sure-
You wanna, uh, move J?
I.
Is it, wait, well, now it's actually, it's actually I, yeah, all right, all right, troublemaker, we'll move I.
Is that, is that another, that's in addition to the one fifty?
This is because Dazney is not gonna accept what we tell them the quote is for the old truck as part of the grant, so we just need to come up with that money, and then when we get the money for the old truck, that'll just go into the fire truck reserve.
So this doesn't affect the one fifty that we have coming?
Yeah.
That's what I thought, this is just something that is additional to that, got it.
Totalize, as I was gonna say, where's that seventy-five thousand dollars going, so?
No, the, uh, when we got the estimate, it didn't hit what we thought it was gonna be, so they want this to-
Supplement.
Well, well, no, it's because they, it's because, yeah, because they can't, they don't, they're not gonna take, we will sell this and get this money after the grant closes and we get our new truck, so-
So we're on our own with what we get for it.
Yeah, and whatever we get for it, we'll just put it in the reserve fund. No big deal.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Accept I O J, okay, any discussion?
You have a discussion?
All in favor, okay, we accept that, right of mine.
Thank you very much for changing that, gentlemen, I appreciate that.
You can scoot out, thanks.
I'll go to another meeting.
Thanks, man.
No, I, I do have another meeting.
I'll check for it, I'll check for it.
Thank you. All right, now we're back to the adapted swing set, uh, approval. I would entertain a motion.
I was gonna say, I think, uh, uh, Mike can find a cheaper outfit for him to do that, I think he's-
Up to seven hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Well, we're, we're not quoting any money.
We're not paying for it.
They're paying for it.
Who's paying?
Residents. Uh, resident is paying for it, we're just-
You never read my emails?
You don't send them to me, boss.
Oh, I do. Just like I sent you a text last night, you don't respond till today.
That's because-
Now you don't have a screen.
Phone was being charged.
Yeah, no, this is, this is a residence who moved into the village.
But I like the idea of them being able to-
Oh, yeah, we can save them some money, that'd be great, they're doing a nice thing, we should try to-
Oh, God, yeah.
So-
Gonna make a motion?
Sorry, I didn't need to wrap it. I, I'm gonna second it.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous, easy one. All right, the next one is, uh, approve a settlement for unpaid gross receipt tax owed by Verizon, so this is part of that, uh, CompuTel thing that we signed up for, where they look through all of our, uh, contracts and, uh, make sure that we're getting paid correctly, um, with all the different, uh, franchise fees and everything, and so this one, yeah, we get, uh, twenty-five hundred bucks out of it.
Wow.
Now, yeah, yep. So, tw- it's free, it's like a contingency lawyer, so it's just free twenty-five hundred dollars, so we just need to, uh, prove it.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
This'll go into the general fund?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good, good.
All the rest of the stuff through, till H, is, uh, already made up, so that's all just on the, on the list, just go back and take it.
Got it. Yep. All right, the next one is, uh, approval of Kevin McMahon to be appointed as the new village code enforcement officer. So, uh, I interviewed Kevin with Pat last week. He's great, uh, he's been working with, uh, Craig forever, there's gonna be some overlap, so that they, um, you know, maybe he, he's up to speed on everything when he takes over, and he would take over August first. And we'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous? The next one is the approval of Donna Cottis to be appointed to a deputy clerk treasurer, so Donna's been doing a great job, very helpful in our office, and we just wanted to make her full-time deputy clerk treasurer. We'd entertain a motion. Yeah.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous? All right, uh, all right, this next one, approval to seek the services of a professional engineer not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars to study, report, and offer solutions for municipal parking within the village. So this is, this came after the planning and zoning, uh, meetings about the Yaman property and Renee's property, and the fact that they're gonna need parking, and that the municipal parking lots that we have are kind of a, not a mess, but they need to be-
Redefined.
Redefined, better signage, um, and we need to see if we can squeeze some more spots in, right? The comp plan has a completely different parking layout in that little, uh, that little section there, uh, by Edgewood. So they've got, they've actually got it where we add a, a third more spaces, I don't know if that's possible, or if that's just somebody who drew a nice picture, so that's why we need an engineer to come in and tell us what's possible. So if you, yeah, if you look at the plans, you'll, you'll see what I'm talking about.
This is off of our, uh, village comprehensive plan.
Which was passed in two thousand and nine?
Nine, November two thousand and nine, so, close to it.
So, yeah, so we've had a big parking issue in the village, and we gotta solve it, and this is the first step, uh, I'm not entirely sure how much this, uh, engineer will cost, but we, we set a high limit for it, and then we, we need to report-
You have an engineer in mind, or?
No, we gotta find one, yeah, we gotta find one, so, because we've got three municipal lots that, uh, we need to be looking at.
And we may need to look at more, creating more parking.
Right.
Uh, one of the issues that was brought up on the ZBA meetings was, you know, we have the, uh, the area across from, uh, Pine Street, that's village lot, that could possibly be used as a municipal lot, but I think it's beyond our capabilities, we need to get a professional engineer to help us out, so we make sure we do this right. We got, we're getting growth, which is what we need, it's what we, what we want, this is a good problem to have.
Correct.
Uh, but the buildings that we have were not structured for the automobiles and automobile traffic that we have in our, our hitting. So I, you have a second?
Uh, on the same topic with not having enough parking, the high school has volunteered to set up a bus for Holiday and Homer for the, um, shuttle, so they're, they're gonna do that for free.
Free of charge?
Yeah, I reached out today, so-
They've done that in years past? It didn't happen last year, though, did it?
No.
Okay, well, that's great, uh, very much appreciate them doing that, 'cause that did come up in, uh, one of our many meetings that we just had with the shuttle, that's great.
So I'll, I'll make a motion, um, that we, uh, seek the services of a professional engineer that specializes in parking not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars.
Any second?
That's all right.
Discussion?
How do we find it?
Uh, I think we check with the trades and, and find out within there who, who does this.
We have professional engineers that might-
You might know somebody, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's where I was thinking of going first.
Oh, yeah, we definitely want some of this specializing in parking, yeah.
Because that, you know, the, the ZBA had to authorize a variance for the two projects in order to make this happen, so- It's not, it's a problem that's coming our way, and we need to-
We have to permit if we have to build a parking garage, huh?
Yeah, well, yeah, we're gonna, that's why this is gonna be something that, uh, it's a good problem to have, but it's a problem that's-
Needs to be solved.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous? All right, uh, and then the next one, uh, this is to approve payment for members of the planning board, zoning board, and the rec committee, with a, each member receiving twenty-five dollars per meeting, and the chair is receiving fifty dollars per meeting, so, uh, it's getting a little harder to find people to serve on these boards, it's a lot of work, there's a time commitment, and I think this would, uh, encourage more participation, so, uh, it's pretty common practice.
I'll make a motion.
Too little, too late, I'll second.
Discussion?
And just so the public knows, that we, as trustees who are involved with any of these, aren't getting the twenty-five dollars, so they-
No, no, it's just for-
Not Lulu's for us.
Right, and I just want everybody to make sure that they realize that.
No.
So, we're not just trying to pad our selves.
We, we've been discussing this, and I've discussed this with the ZBA and the, the planning board, and Joan Finch, who sits in on many, many other, and we're one of the few ones that don't do that. So I definitely think this is reasonable, and it's good.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous? All right, uh, the next one is to authorize me to negotiate with the county regarding the workers' comp issues that are going on, mainly the fact that our workers' comp has gone from, seventy thousand two years ago to a hundred thousand this year.
I'll make a motion for that. Second?
Discussion?
But didn't you join the consortium because more people in it?
Well, that was the, that's the county.
Well, yeah, so he, he explains everything last night, uh, we came, we went to the meeting, uh, here, and Bob came, he did a good job of explaining it, um, and we went through all this, and I could, there's like five pages of spreadsheets, like, and I can show you guys in a work session or later, how they come up with everything. The one thing we couldn't get is, um, you know, it says, okay, the village is paying so much more than anyone else, I mean, we're paying the exact same amount as, as the town court. So why are we paying that much? Well, because we have so many people that are making workers' comp claims. So all I did was ask, all right, we need to, we just wanna know who they are and what these claims are, how long they're gonna go for, et cetera. They didn't have that, uh, I don't think we've really ever gotten that consistently, and so, uh, Bob said he was gonna get it to me, and then the other question that came up, um, last night was, how much is the reserve fund for this? Not a lot.
Very little, not a lot.
Yeah, it's, yep, a couple hundred thousand dollars, and so even with this new plan, it's gonna take three to four years for, for the workers' comp program through the county to become solvent, which is really not what you wanna hear, they've got no, no, they've got no, uh, plans for, you know, buying people out, you know, you hurt your arm, right? So they can't buy people out and so, but things go on forever.
It's worse.
They haven't been doing a good job of early intervention, um, you know, getting- They haven't been doing a good job of early intervention, um, you know, getting someone to make sure they get the right treatment early, because. You know, if you get hurt and you don't seek medical care for a while, you're doing, maybe doing more damage, and then when you do seek it, it's more severe. So, um, uh, it's been pretty poorly run from what we could surmise. And so, that's one of the reasons that we're thinking about leaving, um, but, you know, we're not gonna do anything that, uh.
Please.
Hasty, no, we put in our letters so that we reserve the right to, we're the only municipality that did, by the way. So, nobody else got it.
We're good.
I wanna help.
I know you wanna help. So, anyway, this, uh, this just lets me negotiate with them.
I make a motion to authorize the mayor to negotiate with Portland County regarding workers' compensation issues.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous? Okay. Alright, the next one is, um.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks, so we're applying for a really big, well, two sidewalk grants, um, we're gonna look for, try to get about a million dollars. Um, cause when I asked Mike, what sidewalks need repair or replacement in the village, his response was all of them. And I thought he was being flippant, and I drove around, and I looked, and I thought, he's right, they all need to be replaced. They really are all in bad shape, yep. So, we're going for a million, we're trying to combine two different grants. Um, one grant can be used as the match on another grant to a certain extent, so we're sort of looking at that. Uh, basically, this says we're gonna try to get a million dollars for the grants, and the maximum, uh, local match that the village would be required to pay. For a million would be two hundred thousand, twenty percent, so then we'd have to decide, you know, how much residents would pay versus how much we would shoulder of that. Um, and also, there's a chance that one of the grants will lower that two hundred thousand, we're still trying to figure that out. Uh, so, we just need to, uh, authorize the, us to submit that application.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to go ahead and start that.
Alright, I do want to say, okay, alright. Alright, I guess we'll vote then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous? We all love sidewalks.
We're important to the village.
Our trees.
Uh, did we vote on it already?
Yes.
Yes.
We did?
Yes.
Alright, good. Alright. Uh.
I'll back up on this as well, but this is the fees one.
Yes.
Talked about.
So this is, um. We're gonna send some village residents a check that says bank error in your favor, uh, because they, uh, overpaid for a sewer project, so.
Phase one.
Phase one, the phase one sewer, if there's sixty residents.
You're about right, yeah.
Sixty to eighty residents, so they're gonna get a nice check with a letter from us that says, whoops, here's some money. So, hopefully they won't be too mad, cause, you know, it's a check, it's money. Uh, and just for, for the record, uh, we were advised by, by, uh, one of the accounting people. Don't give them the refund, put the money back towards other debt, which was absolutely a no, a non-starter.
Yeah.
So, yes, so I'm not naming names of who, uh, who gave that, but they're not in this room anyway. Alright, so, let's see, the motion?
I make that motion that we authorize the return, uh, of the tax overta- overpayment for the phase one sewer.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I wish I'd lived in that area. Alright, uh, the next item is, uh, authorizing the extension of the term of mayor and trustees from two to four years. Uh, which would be in line with the town, and moving the date of the general village election to November. So, which would save the county money, and also save a lot of trouble of, you know, knocking on doors and snowstorms and.
It just makes sense.
Yeah, it's, uh, I don't know, we don't need to have a separate election, I, you know. People who are gonna pay attention to village elections will pay attention to village elections.
I think we'll have their voter turn up.
I think we'll get a lot better voter, yeah.
So, I'm not for it.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Do you want to read the resolution?
Oh, is it, it's a resolution?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Please.
Go for it, Dan.
Uh, well, settle in. Authorizing extension of terms of mayor and all trustees from two to four years, and moving the date of the general village election to be held biannually. In odd number of years, and to coincide with the general election in November, as set forth by the Portland County Board of Elections. Whereas, section three dash three oh two five A of the New York Village Law, Village Law, provides the village board with the authority to extend the term of office. Of the village mayor, the terms of office for all trustees, or the terms of the office of mayor and all trustees. From two years to four years by adoption, adoption of either a resolution or local law, subject to, subject to permissive referendum. And whereas pursuant to section three dash three oh two five A of the village law, if such resolution or local law shall become effective. The offices, the term or terms of which have been extended shall thereafter be filled for terms of four years. Commencing at the beginning of the official year following the next general village election, at which such offices are to be filled. No such resolution of local law, however, shall become effective within thirty days prior to a general village election. And whereas, section three dash three oh two seven A of the village law provides the village board with the authority to move the date. Of the general village election as to be held at the same time as the November general election. Biannually, in odd number of years, as set forth by the Portland County Board of Elections. By adoption of either a resolution or local law, subject to permissive referendum. And whereas pursuant to section three dash three oh two seven A of the village law. For if such resolution or local law shall become effective, the date of the general village election. Shall thereafter be held at the same time as the November general election, biannually, in odd number of years, as set forth by the Portland County Board of Elections. No such resolution or local law, however, shall become effective within thirty days prior to the general village election. And whereas the village board has determined that it is in the best interest of the village of Homer. For the terms of office of the mayor and all the trustees to be extended from two years to four years. And whereas the village board has further determined that it is in the best interest of the village of Homer. To extend the terms of your office of the mayor and all trustees from two years to four years by resolution, subject to permissive referendum. And whereas the village board has determined that it is in the best interest of the village of Homer to move the date. Of the general village election to coincide with the general election in November, biannually, in odd number of years, as set forth by the Portland County Board of Elections. And whereas the village board has further determined that it is in the best interest of the village of Homer to move the date. Of the general village election to coincide with the general election in November, biannually, in odd number of years, as set forth by Portland County Board of Elections. By resolution, subject to permissive referendum. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the term of office of the mayor and all trustees for the village of Homer shall be extended from two years to four years. The date of the general village election shall be moved to coincide with the general election in November, biannually, in odd number of years. As set forth by the Portland County Board of Elections. And be it further resolved that if this resolution shall become effective. The office of mayor and all the trustees shall thereafter be filled for, for terms of four years, commencing at the beginning of the official year. Following the next general village election, at which such offices are to be filled. And the general village election will be moved to coincide with the general election in November, biannually, in odd number of years, as set forth. By the Portland County Board of Elections. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall be subject to permissive referendum pursuant to article nine of the village law. And shall not take effect until thirty days after its adoption. Nor till approved by the affirmative vote of a majority of the qualified electors of the village, voting on such a proposition for its approval. If within thirty days after ado- adoption of this resolution, there be filed with the village clerk. A petition signed and acknowledged by electors of the village in number equal to at least twenty per centum of such electors in the village. As shown in the register of electors for the previous general village election. Protesting against such act or resolution, and requesting that it be submitted to the electors of the village for their approval or disapproval. And it is further resolved that the village clerk shall, within ten days of the date of the adoption of this resolution. In the official newspaper of the village, post and publish a notice in substantially informed submitted here too. Which shall set forth the date of the adoption of this resolution, and contain an abstract of such resolution, concisely stating the purpose and effect thereof. And indicating that such resolution is subject to a permissive referendum. It is further resolved that the village board hereby authorizes the mayor to take such administrative, administrative action as may be necessary. To effectuate the terms of this resolution.
Wow, shoot, could you read that back? I didn't quite get one.
Yeah.
Everybody clear on that? So, the, uh, line in the short of it is, um, if. People want to file petitions to push this per- permissive referendum, they need to, four hundred and twenty signatures?
That's about four hundred and fifty.
Four hundred and fifty signatures, so, um.
Cause it's not a percentage of all, of only those who voted, it's a percentage of all eligible electors as of the last election.
Got it. So, uh, alright, so we've got the motion and the second, any other discussion?
So, I just wanna, we discussed this last month, it was in the Homer News, I know I've discussed this with numerous residents, and the feedback's all been positive.
Yep.
Mostly, it's, uh, about time.
Yep.
Um, you know, my only concern was, you know, you, you were extending from a two-year to four-year, so sometimes that. Sometimes it's difficult to find people to run for office, and now, we're doing it for four years, that was their one concern that that was expressed to me. And I just wanna make sure that we're clear on when the next election is, if this passes.
If it passes, we, the next election will be November of twenty nineteen.
Rather than March.
Exactly, those who are up in March will go with November.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I think the opposite, I think it would encourage more people to run if they knew that they didn't have to spend every other year running. Cause that's, uh, but, uh, so, I think it's good we could line this up with the town, and, uh. Alright, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry to make a motion.
Yeah, uh, Tim made it, and.
Tim can second, did I say it?
Oh, thank you.
There you go.
Tim, I get my second, so.
Alright, we got another resolution, this one's much shorter, um, there is a draft local waterfront revitalization. Uh, program that was commit, that was completed in two thousand and ten, but not formally adopted.
Really?
Yeah, and so, as of, I don't know, it's next year or the year after, we cannot apply for grant funding through the LWRP without a formally adopted. Local plan, so this is simply a resolution that formally adopts a plan.
I'll make that resolution.
Well, we got the resolution, uh, yeah, another one, I'll read this one, Dan, his hands, uh, he, he wrote the bad one. Alright, Village of Homer, resolution accepting inclusion in the mighty Tiafnioga River Local Waterfront Revitalization Program Plan update. Whereas, the city of Portland, in partnership with eleven associated villages and towns along the Tiafnioga River. In Portland County, including the village of Homer. Initiated preparation of a local waterfront revitalization program in cooperation with the New York State Department of State. In accordance with provisions of executive law, article forty-two, and. Whereas, the draft local waterfront revitalization program, LWRP, was completed in two thousand and ten, but was not formally adopted, and. Whereas, the city of Portland wishes to submit an application for preparation for an update and adoption of the Tiafnioga River Local Waterfront Revitalization Program Plan. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the village of Homer fully supports the city's application, and agrees to partner with the city on the development and adoption of the revised LWRP. Be it further resolved, the village of Homer commits twenty-five hundred dollars towards the required twenty-five percent match of the project. Because I very believe we have to spend twenty-five hundred dollars, but we're gonna have to do it if we wanna apply for any of this grant funding.
I make the motion that we accept the resolution as written.
I'll second.
Any discussion? This is there, this is what we get our, we spend our Verizon money that we give back on.
Yeah, yeah, it's part of the comprehensive plan, it's part of the issue, uh.
Should've been done a long time ago.
Major thing, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous? Uh, okay, now the moment everyone's been waiting for.
This right here?
The surplus vehicle bid opening. Brr, brr, brr. Nope, I think we probably do it. Oh, look at that pocket knife, look at that Swiss Army, then you're gonna have to open it, because that thing looks far too deadly.
What is this for the people?
These are the, uh, bids on all the surplus property that we had listed in the Homer News and on the website, so it's all sealed bids, so this one. Is for the four seventy-five riding landmark. And we have a bid of two hundred dollars. Let's see if we have any others on riding landmarks. This one is for the Ford Explorer, and this person has bid four thousand seven hundred and eight dollars.
Some interesting bid.
Curses! We don't need to open the blue one. Oh, wow. Uh, right, this one is for the Ford nineteen ninety-five dump truck, forty-two hundred dollars. Extra piece of paper, it takes me a minute. This one is for the four boxes of miscellaneous radios, pagers, chargers, thirty bucks. Probably fair price, uh. Can I get this one open? I wish he'd be so upset, he's probably texting me right now. This is for the police explorer, his bid is a thousand dollars, that's not gonna do it, fortunately, this one not gonna do it. And so, that's all the bids we have, so, we've got lucky winners. Uh, Yusef Daba of Lake Island, Illinois. Has won the Explorer for four seven thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. Which is, uh, that's a steal.
Is that, uh?
You don't have to accept them.
We don't have to accept them?
Yes.
You don't have to accept them, and I would recommend not accepting any of them.
Yeah, this, this one should go to auction.
Yes, I wanna, I wanna put them all on.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a fair price for that.
I wouldn't have got it anyway, Shelley couldn't have got it anyway.
The two hundred dollars for the four seventy-five mower is probably right in line, we should just get rid of that.
Alright, so we'll accept that one, we will accept the bid from Mike Ellis, who wants the, uh. Four seventy-five mower for two hundred bucks, as it is, and the dump truck, forty-two hundred, no, Mike?
No.
Okay, nope, alright, unfortunately, sorry, sorry, Tim, and the radios, you don't pay?
No, I wanna, I'm gonna put them on auctions in a minute, we should be able to get two or three hundred dollars.
Two or three hundred dollars for those, okay, unfortunately, sorry about that, uh, so we're all losers except Mike Ellis.
I think I might school Mike Ellis, I think it was a year, I don't know, he was in high school.
There you go.
So do we need a motion, um, to?
Accept that one bid, and then send the rest to auction?
Yeah.
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept the bid for the four seventy-five riding mower, and that we put the rest of the items up for auction.
Auctions international.
Auctions international.
Auctions of course, any final?
Two hundred buckaroos.
Maybe say something that the prices we got weren't reasonable, or weren't of interest, so.
The prices that we received on the rest of them were not fair market value, and by state law, we have to have fair market value, so. We cannot accept those as what they are, is that acceptable, man?
I'll make it in a second.
Discussion?
I just wanna see what we, we actually get from.
That Explorer should be worth, that Explorer should be worth, yeah, no, yeah, it should be, I mean, it's two thousand and twelve. It's been wrecked, but it's been fixed.
Out of curiosity, what happens if somebody doesn't pay, does it go back on, to the next, uh, bid?
At auctions international?
No, for, for example, the mower, if somebody just doesn't come up with the money that is bid on.
We're gonna kneecap Mike Ellis.
No, 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 does it, does it go back up on the website, people, uh, another announcement for, or?
Yeah, if, if he doesn't come up with the money, I think he wants it pretty much, I don't think he's a pro.
No, I was just curious.
That's a good question.
Not, not, not for that item in particular.
I would say that we would probably just send it to auction with all the rest of it.
Auctions international, if, if, uh, the final bid is accepted, if he doesn't come up with the money, it goes back on the next highest bidder.
Since we only had one bid for this?
Yeah.
You only had one bid, but here, once we put them on auctions international, there's several people that bid on it, you see who bids on it.
Right, okay, well then, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any unanimous? Dante, do you have anything for us?
Uh, I do, uh, it's a, a Morgan's discharge. Uh, Donald Sallett.
Will you want these for posterity?
No, they didn't, except the.
You're gonna send them a letter back? Uh, you don't need to send one to those writer of the blue letters.
How far are that according?
He understands.
Oh, Dom, did you happen to talk to the mayor about this mortgage discharge?
I left the letter on his desk.
Did you see a letter?
I didn't.
Okay, so just, uh, kind of a short story, we got another discharge from Tomma for a mortgage they gave, uh, in, uh, two thousand, two thousand. Um, it looks like Tom did a bunch of research, they had previously, they had a discharge and signed it, but they never filed it.
Tomma said they had a, received a discharge.
Yeah.
But it would never got recorded. Uh, and it looks like. I don't know who was supposed to record it at the time.
The buyer's attorney, um.
Well.
Subsequently, his property is being sold right now, so they're looking for a discharge, cause you can't really sell a property.
Did we discuss this one recently?
It's a different mortgage.
Different, different mortgage, similar circumstances. That, this particular one, uh, the mortgage originated, the payments were supposed to start in what, uh, two thousand and?
Yeah.
They were only, they only had the mortgage for like, a year, and then a property got transferred.
Yeah, in two thousand, the property was transferred, the discharge. Apparently Tomma has a discharge on it.
They couldn't find the discharge, but they had a note that said they received the discharge on a given date.
So there's no issue, really?
I don't believe so, like, the mortgage is for eight, four thousand dollars, eighteen years ago, and presumably, if you could just sign it, it would be below, yeah.
So we're not voting nothing on this?
No, this is, well, it's a review, so.
Throw a tie? Anything else?
No, uh, we can talk about the lease, it was a great session, I can talk about it now.
Yeah, probably, I'll talk about it in exactly the same.
Thanks, Tom.
We're gonna say stuff, anything else?
No, I have a bunch of papers for Dan, um, for the ones. Uh, do you have Shrek title and the, the survey, I don't know if we have a place for it yet, but.
Comments by board members, I know, uh, Pat's always got a list.
I don't know if I wanna start or you want somebody else to go?
Who else, anyone else usually, they want to go?
I came in a handicapped entrance, beautiful.
Working good? Excellent. Excellent.
We have to come up with some dates, uh, the fellow from Ibis got back to me, he's gonna come down and talk to us all, we can explain really additional stuff we'd like to do.
What about the next work session?
I, I mentioned it, personally, I'd like to do it beforehand. Just to get the ball around a little faster. So I, I just told him I'd give him some dates that we could maybe hook up, and then whatever he comes back with, I'll get to you guys so we can. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, cause I was doing things, but. Cause I'm pretty free for the rest of the month.
Alright. Uh, next week, I cannot do the seventeenth, cause I do have to go to that, like, members thing, hobos, although, yeah, yeah, I can do that. I could do Monday, the sixteenth, I could do Wednesday, the eighteenth, I could do Thursday, the nineteenth.
Monday, the sixteenth?
Yep, Monday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
Everybody else okay with those kind of dates?
Nail it as, as fast as you can, and then tell Dan, cause we need to know our system.
Exactly, yep. I should be able to have a response from him tomorrow.
Excellent, excellent.
So that's all I got.
Got it, oh, you already did yours, Ed?
I'm good.
What? Alright.
You're awesome, you're making careful all the things I'm concerned about.
Well, that's good. Pat doesn't think so.
I know. Just looking for your job.
I know, it's alright. What do you got, Pat?
See, these guys throwing me off, I'm sorry.
Ah, yeah.
Uh, attended the, uh, town, Homer Town, uh, meeting last night, along with, uh, I know you've already discussed the workman's comp issue. Um, the bridge updates. Uh, Wall Street has been downgraded from three ton to two ton, which means it's gonna be closed to vehicular traffic. Uh, Pine, the, uh, Leticula Bridge on Pine Street, uh, has been deemed not suitable for pedestrian traffic. So they're gonna be tightening up.
The closure.
The closure on, uh, the bridge over Pine Street, and they're gonna be closing, um, the Wall Street Bridge to vehicular traffic. So for all our residents that utilize those, uh, it's gonna be very shortly, I would expect, uh, much more before next week, that they will probably have them. Closed up, if not sooner. The issue, uh, becomes is they, the town had applied for a grant, uh, to help us with, uh, to help with the Wall Street. And for those that are new to this conversation, the town actually owns, is responsible for those, is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of those bridges. So they applied for a grant, but we're not expecting to hear back from that until, uh.
September, October.
September, October, and even after we hear about it, then it's gonna take another year or so, it could take up to two years to get that. Those bridges, uh, one Wall Street replaced. Uh, they're exploring some options, uh, as we know more, we'll pass that along.
They gonna put some no outlet signs up, or some dead end signs for that?
I'd have to check with John Phelps, he's the one that's gonna, and Mike, so, if you'll court things. Attended the, uh, Family Health Network, that's the new building on two eighty-one, uh, the open house, uh, had some really good food. Those are strictly administrative offices.
For all the building and stuff.
For their whole, uh.
Operation.
Operation. So, very nice, uh, very informative, uh, they also own quite a bit of the land around there, so they have room for expansion. Uh, themselves, so that's, that was great. Kelly Preston, uh, our legislator, uh, attended the meeting at the town last night. Uh, I've got a copy of the, uh, state of a county. Uh, I haven't had a chance to read through it yet, but I'll keep that up for everybody. And they are discussing, uh, the issues with the, uh, jail. Uh, there's three positions that are opening up, uh, the administrator position, uh, the highway superintendent, and the veterans coordinator.
Make sure of a couple others too.
Yep. So that was, uh, that was the highlights. Uh, the, I figured I'd let you talk about the sales tax, because that's just not.
Is that funny?
That's not fun.
Yep. You're out of order! Oh, Kristen, yeah, so.
I was gonna get that after, the comments are done before, is that?
Yep, we'll do it after comments, are you done with your comments?
No, I think it's enough.
You sure? So, uh, back to the sales tax. As I feared. The county has no. I don't know, it's, it boggles my mind. No one can get the actual straight numbers from them, as to what our loss is gonna be. There are multiple spreadsheets floating around, there's disagreement, people have been giving different ones, Kelly said she's probably seen eight. Uh, we have the one that we believe is the latest, but we're not sure, because other people. Say no, I mean, when they voted on this, they told the city that the city was coming out ahead, according to this spreadsheet, the city loses three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars each year. That's not ahead. Um, Fred, last night was pretty sure that the town of Homer was only gonna lose thirty-three thousand. They're gonna lose eighty-five thousand, according to this spreadsheet, and we are gonna lose sixty-nine thousand. And that's a two percent tax increase, and that's, that blows the tax cap right there. Uh, and that's just for the first five years, and then we're, they're gonna take more. So the.
This is a ten-year plan.
This is ten-year plan, and of course, the biggest issue is, and it's one that Kelly, uh, shared in frustration, and I think Linda. Is there, and I'm sure there are other legislators, uh, the county hasn't really said what they're gonna do with the money yet. They've done this whole thing where they told us, it's only gonna be used for this, this, and this, you know? Million dollars towards the jail, and.
Two hundred thousand dollars for the emergency.
Two hundred dollars for the radio, and then three hundred thousand dollars towards, uh.
Debt reduction.
Well, originally.
Original.
Originally, they said it was gonna be to, uh, shore up the workers' comp fund. Then they said it was gonna be debt reduction. The other night, they tried to slip in debt, deficit reduction, which means, oh, they're just taking three hundred thousand dollars from us and using it to balance their budget. So they tabled that, there's still mass confusion, um. Oh, did you share yours with them? You saw Kevin, did you look, yeah?
Is there a time limit, and we have to make a time limit, is there?
Oh, it's already voted on, we're already stuck with this, we just don't know what the actual numbers are. And we can't get a straight answer out of anybody.
And what they're gonna use the money for.
Yeah, we can't get an actual.
That last three hundred thousand dollars.
And this was the concern, which was, you know, you're just taking this money to balance your own budget, you're not really, you don't really have a plan for it, and they said, no, 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 we have a plan. No, they don't, they didn't, so. Yeah, so it's, uh, each municipality's gonna suffer quite a bit, um. Some more than others, I mean, we're, you know, ours is a two percent. Tax increase. The town of Homer, yeah, the town of Homer's gonna have to increase their taxes.
And we pay forty-four percent of that, so not only will the village.
Yeah.
Dig two percent for our own stuff, we're gonna have to pay more for the town.
It's just frustrating that we, that we couldn't get the information. And not only couldn't we get it, we, we can't really get it, it's almost a month later, we still can't get the information.
I'm even not sure they had.
I don't, they don't know what's going on. So, anyway. That's the sales tax news, so we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do, if we're gonna do cuts across the board, or if we're gonna cut one particular thing, or if we're gonna. Just raise taxes, which.
That's what people elected all of us to work.
Yeah.
I mean, it takes leadership, and we have it, so we'll do it.
I know, so, uh, we'll have to figure that out, and then, of course, we have to budget for a bigger decline in years to come.
The next crisis will.
Which is gonna make our private plan even more important.
But, on the positive note, you know, you may recall that they said after the twenty-eight million, one of the plans that was voted, that anything above and beyond that would just be split between county and city. That's not, that's not gonna happen, so, above the twenty-eight million, so. Everybody purchase your stuff in Portland, so we get the sales tax, and everything above that still gets distributed down to us.
Buy local, buy stuff in Portland, get your gas in Portland.
Kristen is here, right?
She is here, just in the nick of time, literally, literally, we are done except for this. Uh, how did farmers market go?
It went great today, there was a lot of, um. A lot of people that stopped and bought stuff from our vendors, it was really. Really good, I'm not sure how much of it had to do with.
The band?
The band, you know, cause it was consistent with, you know, the whole time we were there, it was just constant foot track working.
Smiling vendor faces, how many people do you think were in the area? Wild guys.
Um, I, we started the raffle, so I could look to get a number, um, but I didn't look at how many, I fell out yet.
So I like, oh, alright.
I was just gonna say, you know, I, I always go through and ask the vendors, and I think, I think they all made quite a few more sales than I usually do, so it was, it was good.
And I see it on the vendor list, we're getting more, we have even more vendors now.
Yeah.
So that's good, it's totally slow, slow moving, but we're going.
Yeah, today I had post, I had posted on Facebook, um. A post referencing the band that was tonight, and so that got tons of hits, like, because people.
Right.
Shared it, cause everybody wants to go see, not only the, the class.
They are very popular.
Yeah.
My girlfriend just said there's probably about three hundred people there.
It's, it's packed.
I was gonna say.
Like, the music series, it's packed, there's such a good group there.
See, it was such a good idea to combine it.
So this is a good time to tell you I'm over budget by two hundred bucks.
Oh, he's good.
Well, it's funny, cause I was about to, I was about to make a motion to take some more money out of my bill, so.
Smooth delivery.
One of the things that we talked about in staff meeting that I would like to do is authorize, uh, a thousand dollars to be used for radio ads to promote the farmer's market. If we're gonna, it's gonna have to come out of your Budgets Act, but we'll fix you later.
Um, might I suggest, uh, social media advertising?
Well, we could do that, that's a good idea too.
I, I did a test, uh, yesterday, put twenty bucks into Facebook advertising, and it blew up.
It works great.
Really well.
So, why don't we do, um.
Couldn't we do it as a PSA?
The issue with that is, you have to use a credit card, and we don't have credit cards.
Yeah, you, well, yeah.
You'd have to use a personal and get reimbursed for it. Right.
Yeah, it's gonna reimburse the tax, but I don't know if they charge tax.
I didn't, no tax.
There's supposed to be tax on advertising.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, so we could do that, and if, uh, if you want me to put it on my card, Kristen, I would for that, so I was thinking, well, what do you think? Thousand for the radio and three hundred for social media, and then three hundred for social media would be for the rest of the year. And then the radio, I think, spread out for the rest of the year.
How much, uh, radio time is that bias?
Radio time is pretty reasonable, I wanna say it's. Nineteen dollars for a thirty-second or a sixty-second spot, something like that, I mean, it's, it's a lot of spots. But we could have John put together a package.
I would recommend that we start out lower and then add to it.
Okay.
How about three hundred and three hundred?
Three hundred and three hundred?
Then add to it, if it starts cooking, we can add to it.
Okay, I could live with that, what do you guys think? Yeah?
Yep.
So, uh. Motion on table, where's, who made it?
I'll make it.
Ed second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, if you, Dak, you can help Kristen with the social media, have you ever boosted posts, posts on Facebook?
It gives me a little box I can click and post.
It's super easy, and you can, uh, you can set it by like, location, and interest, and all this stuff, you can really target it, it's kinda neat. So, um, and if you guys need a credit card to put it on, just, I'll put it on mine, and then I'll make it first.
Okay.
It's one of those things, it's like a slow, you know, you, you set it for how much you want to spend per day, so you, you know. So I would just say, you know, you wanna advertise on the days, just boost each post on the day.
Well, I know that somebody stopped today, and they said that they stopped simply because they were reminded on Facebook. So.
Perfect.
And I do think a lot of that was that my post got shared a lot because.
We just got a comment, uh, from, uh, Paula Nideroffer that said, that's how she heard about the band tonight, was the Facebook post, so.
On the most farmer's market, perfect.
And Kelly Preston wanted us to remember that the sales tax numbers are based on twenty-eight million, could be more, or could be less. So, if we get less sales tax, then it would hurt even more.
Water billing. Oh, do you need to make a motion to accept the farmer's market report? Do you, I make a motion to accept the farmer's market report as written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dan, miss? Alright, water billing report, water billing went out, it was smooth. Good.
I just wanna comment, I think this is good that we have this, um, keeps things on top, lets residents know that we're listening, and that we're addressing these issues, so, Kristen, this is good.
Yep, and great job, great job, yep. Any other discussion?
Any questions for, about the dump?
Do we have many, uh, well, you said we had some issues, but that was mostly because of, uh.
The acting of the mess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that is an issue with, um, bills getting lost in mail, and lost, and, um. One of the, the first thing that we did was we turned the, the bills to yellow. So they can stand out more, at least in people's homes, you know, if it makes it to the home, so. I don't know as far as, um, you know, if we do the, you know, we had talked about doing the full page, like, maybe if it was an envelope, it would be easier.
Yeah, I thought we discussed making a full-size sheet.
We, yeah, I, I would like to do, I would like to make a full-size sheet.
Williamson is, is working on making that for us.
Oh, are they? Perfect, and then we can put in a second sheet with just some news updates, like a little news center.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're mailing it.
Might as well.
Might as well.
Yeah, so there, I. Yeah, so there, I, I haven't heard back from her, but when we had met with Peggy, when Peggy came down, um, I had told her that that was an issue that something we were looking at, and she said that she's done it for other communities, and she'll work on one for us. So that's being worked on, and so hopefully, because that was the biggest thing, that's the biggest, um, calls that we've gotten, is the people didn't get their previous bill, and so it's two bills this time, and so it makes it higher, um.
I make a motion that we accept the water billing report as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dan, miss? Okay, all is left is executive session. We need to discuss, uh, real estate.
I make a motion that we, uh, go into executive session unless the press has some questions for, uh, the mayor.
Um, it's about the Damon Project, so it might take a while, so we'll just call tomorrow.
Okay.
You sure?
Uh, yeah, we gave a call today, but I can't remember who Jake called, so we're just gonna call and tell someone answers.
You didn't call me.
Okay, um, I'll just have him call you tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Will you be able to get that, um, the, these emailed to us, though?
I'd have to talk to the Yingans, they're, uh,
Yeah, Jamie Yaman.
I borrowed those from them last night, so we can show them off today, but.
Do you have a contact with them?
Jamie Yaman. Damon Real Estate.
Yeah, so, yeah, just call Damon Real Estate and ask for Jamie, he'll give you a.
And his cell number is on the website, because he's.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we go into executive session, did I already say that?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Dan, miss, alright, executive session.